Recorded, anyone wishing not to be seen on videotape may be excused. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the republic of America and to the republic which stands on its own accord, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Anyone wishing to address the board during open comment section can take a yellow card from the corner and pass it over to Ms. DeMayo and she'll pass it up to the front. We have a five-minute, if you have never been here before, we have a five-minute timer that goes off. You can make all of your remarks and questions and then the board will respond when you're finished making your remarks. I have an announcement before the meeting starts, which I think probably most of you are here to hear. After a long and thoughtful discussion with my children, family, and friends, I've decided to step down as the President of the Washington Township Board of Education. While I have loved and cherished every moment I've spent as the President, it has taken away time from the most important part of my life, my children. As a single mother, every second counts and I'm spread too thin, I am missing too many special moments lately. I feel as though I can't fully provide the focus and attention that my children deserve, especially now, and also the focus and attention that the school district deserves. Like any good parent, I will always put my children's health, safety, and well-being first. I will stay on as a board member because I feel I can still be an asset to the district as a board member, and I wish the new President, whomever it may be, the best of luck. Thank you. So, that's effective immediately, which means, Mr. Danovi, you are the presiding officer as of right now, and you need to...
At this time, we entertain nominations for a president.
Can't hear. It's small, but you're nuts.
At this time, we will entertain...
O'Brien's on.
At this time, we will entertain motions or nominations for President of the Washington Township Board of Education.
I nominate Ray Danovi.
Any other nominations?
I second. Yes, Renee Pollard. Elaine Clancy.
I decline. I decline.
Did you say Renee Pollard or Elaine Clancy?
Both. Yeah, both. Both. Elaine Clancy and Renee.
You do not need a second for nominations for President. You can only nominate one person.
I decline. I will be away for a whole month and I feel that the person who's the President should be here.
I also decline. I'm not in a position right now to take on that responsibility. I appreciate your confidence, but I decline.
Brian? I nominate Brian Ellis as President.
Do we have any other nominations?
Can I second both of them? They're both great.
Unfortunately, I'm going to have to decline as well. I apologize. I'm really tied up. I just can't do it right now.
I nominate Kathleen.
I decline.
Any other nominations? No comments, please. At this time, nominations are closed. Do we have a vote on the nomination?
Have discussion?
All right, we'll open for discussion.
Well, I have to go on record, Mr. Danovi. You came onto the board in January at the reorganization meeting and very soon after you were gone for almost two months. I have a hard time voting for you to be President, as well as the fact that you were on the board, you went left, ran for council, came back. I have an email here from Julie dated July 24th. I asked Ray to run. I don't have confidence in you being the President of the board. I just want to put that on record.
Thank you for your comment. Let me address that comment. It is true, I do go away to Florida for two months. I'm retired. I think I've earned the right to do that. During my time there, I followed board policy. I attended two meetings via cellphone, which is part of our policy. I also attended my committee meetings, both negotiations, the fact they carried me out in the computer, I was the only one there that night for negotiations. I also attended all the budgetary meetings. I don't plan to miss another meeting, I'm not going anywhere. I plan my schedule around the Board of Education meetings. You will have an opportunity in our reorganization meeting in January to select another President. I will not run again because I'm leaving for two months and I will continue to do so. I have been a person who has given community service in this community for years. I've served on various committees. I've been, my whole life revolves around education and helping children, and I take a little offense to the fact that certain board members are constantly putting down other board members for such thing as being absent for a board meeting. We're not getting paid for this, all right? I have attended board meetings faithfully. This is my fourth year as a board member, faithfully. The first two years I wasn't in Florida, I was at every board meeting. I'm sorry, but I am retired and I do go away. But I will not be planning any trips, I will be not taking any leave of time from this board from now until we have reorganization, and I feel I can handle the responsibilities. So, I thank the board members who supported me on this vote, and I look forward to work with you for the betterment of the children in our schools district. Thank you.
We didn't vote yet.
Roll call, please.
Mrs. Baker?
No.
Mrs. Clancy?
Upstain.
Ms. DeMayo?
Yes.
Dr. Ellis?
Yes.
Mrs. Gallinero?
Yes.
Ms. Pollard?
Upstain.
Ms. Guzempel?
Yes.
Mr. Danovi?
Yes.
Yes.
Would you like to switch seats with me? Okay.
Motion carries.
I'm logged into my... Do we need to nominate a... That's the Vice President?
Everyone settled in? Okay. At this time, I will take nominations for Vice President.
I nominate Brian Ellis.
Renee Pollard.
Any other nominations? Nominations are closed. Okay, all those in favor? I think Brian was first. Brian, first of all, do you accept the nomination?
I accept.
Okay. All those in favor of Dr. Ellis as Vice President?
Yeah, two people. Renee.
Okay. What's that?
Roll call each one. Roll call each one.
Okay. We'll start with Dr. Ellis, we'll have a roll call on Dr. Ellis.
Mrs. Clancy?
Who are we voting on?
Brian.
Brian.
Upstain.
Ms. DeMayo?
Yes.
Mr. Danovi?
Yes.
Mrs. Gallinero?
Yes.
Ms. Pollard?
Yes.
Mrs. Baker?
Upstain.
Ms. Guzempel?
Yes.
Dr. Ellis?
Yes.
We have a majority on that one, so...
Yes.
Do we have to vote on the other one?
Based upon that vote, we do not have to vote for the second one. We have a majority for Mr. Ellis, Dr. Ellis.
Congratulations, Brian. At this time, we have no presentations for this evening. Any questions on the agenda?
I have a question on the agenda.
Yes.
Under D correspondence, I noticed that there is correspondence from two people, Mr. Balisandro and Mr. Lucarini. Question I have, and yes, I'm fairly new here, I have noticed in the past, and I sort of recall when we were doing redistricting, there were a lot of people that wrote about the redistricting, and as I recall, their names appeared and it gave a reason why they, reason what the correspondence was about. It didn't say what they said, but it said the topic. I'm just wondering why those names are just by themselves and the public doesn't know why they're there.
If you click on it, you can see the description. Mine says Thomas Baldassaro regarding superintendent search process.
Click on it.
Lucarini regarding superintendent search process. Like, if you just click on the name.
Can I just add that, can I just add that I believe...
Oh, okay, I see it, when I click on my computer, it doesn't show up. I'm seeing it's on the paper copy, that's good. Thank you, that takes care of that. It's not coming up on the computer.
Okay, before I open the meeting to the public, I'd like to let...
I also have something on old business. Do we do that now?
We're not there yet.
Not there yet?
We're only, we're going to be working on the agenda items on the work session. So, at this time, we're ready to open the meeting to the public. Before we open the meeting, I'm going to give you an update on where we are with our superintendent search. During the last week, Mrs. Wector and I have been involved, we contacted New Jersey school boards, we did contact our rep. Our rep will be attending our regular meeting this month. She will be arriving around 7:30, 7:45 because she has a prior commitment, but she understands the need for us to get involved with the New Jersey school boards with our superintendent search, so she will be coming. At that time, she will be discussing the proposal that she will be sending in to Janine, which will outline the different layers of a superintendent search. There is a cost factor for the different layers, and after she gets done discussing questions from the Board of Education members, as well as the public, it will be open to the public, if you have questions of our school boards rep, you may ask questions as well. After that, we will go into closed session for the purpose of negotiations, because we do have a proposal and it is negotiations with New Jersey school boards, so we'll go into closed session, we'll discuss the proposal, we will select what items of the proposal we will be moving forward with, with our superintendent search, which will be totally conducted by New Jersey school boards, and we will come out and vote on that package. Once that package has been voted on and we have hired an outside agency to assist with the superintendent search, from there on, the School Boards Association and the Board of Education will continue that search, which will be totally transparent and open to the public. I have a motion to open the meeting to the public. We have a motion and a second, meeting's now open to the public. All in favor?
For agenda items only, remember that.
Yeah. Is that, ask Joe if that's legal.
That's for next session.
It's not, this, that's not an agenda. There's nothing on that. At this time, Jessica Robinson would like to talk about the middle-level summer credit recovery.
Hello, this is something I just came across today. I had a meeting for one of my kids that, you know, is really struggling, and he's always struggled, but of course, the virtual and COVID thing on top of it. So, I had a meeting today and I found out that the summer school, which he's, you know, close to having to do that, is virtual. And then I just happened to be looking over the agenda tonight at dinner and I noticed that that was actually on, you know, something that was on here. So, my question was, when you have these kids that are struggling and then the, you know, the whole virtual and COVID factor on top of it, how do you come to the decision that summer school is also virtual? I know other towns like Gloucester Township, they, even last year, their summer school was in-person. So, my question is, how did you guys decide for kids that are struggling, instead of, you know, being in front of the teacher and getting instruction that way in the summer to catch them up, virtual was the best option? And then also, on the agenda, it had how much money you were spending, the cost of it, and I see, you know, the two teacher stipends, and then I see the 75 courses, $350 a course, so it comes to $26,000. So, I guess my question is, is that less expensive than hiring teachers in person in the summer? Is that why you came to that decision? Because I know last year when they offered my son help, which was also, I think, something from the COVID money, it was free, but that was also virtual. So, all it was, was you just did online work by yourself, you were basically self-teaching, and then one of these teachers that they hired just checked in with you for like a half an hour to just see if you were doing your work, but it wasn't really any kind of instruction. So, I guess, you know, that's also my question, why aren't we giving these kids like real summer instruction? Why is it just virtual? Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Robinson. I'm going to defer to some of these questions with Dr. Gregor, who's here, but I want you to be aware that we've never really had a regular summer school in Washington Township. Our kids used to go to the Gloucester County Institute of Technology for summer school for credit recovery, and it was always a combination program of both in and virtual instruction. It's been that way for years. So, it's not a change of any way, shape, or form. We've been delivering this particular format of summer school for the past several years, ever since the Gloucester County Institute of Technology stopped providing that opportunity for our kids. I believe that there is a level of combination with teacher interaction, it's just not pure online instruction, but it is credit recovery. Steve, is there anything that you want to add to that?
Sure, it's, I think this is our eighth year of doing it this way, and we used to have, the two teacher stipends that you see are for the teacher from our district to monitor the progress of the children who take the classes through the New Jersey Virtual School. There's also a teacher at the end, at the other end of that course, that works for the New Jersey Virtual School. So, they have a teacher who is delivering the content, much of it asynchronously, and then we have our own employees who are following up. And last summer, they made phone calls, they made visits, they did emails, they did webexes with students, and it was pretty successful. We don't think we're going to have 75 courses to recover, it's probably going to be less than that, but I wrote the proposal so that we would not come up short and therefore not inconvenience our parents as well with the cost, which could top $1,000. So, we're looking to fund that through the district, and we feel that we can make this very successful as it has been in the past.
Thank you. Thank you. The other items that are presented at this time are not agenda items, but I will call them back once we have the second open public portion. Motion to close to the public? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. At this time, we'll move into committee reports. Negotiations, Renee, you want to give a report or you want me to report on that? Basically, we're moving forward, we're making progress, we cannot discuss negotiations in public, but the two units that we're negotiating with are negotiating in good faith, and we believe that negotiations are on track for a good settlement. Okay? Elaine? Elaine, you want to do...
Student activities.
Student activities?
Connie.
Oh, Connie?
I'm going to do the report tonight for Renee. Renee is the chairperson. The members of that committee are Mr. Bolendorf, Mrs. Clancy, myself, Mrs. Pollak, Sharon Reif, Dr. Alexander. We met on Thursday, April 7th. Not present was Elaine Clancy and Julie, Julie Guzempel. The meeting wasn't a real long meeting, there was another meeting right after ours with negotiations, but we did go through several items. One of the items was the vacation carryover. The administration reviewed the plan to manage vacation day carryover and to manage the number of days going forward. We had the pandemic last year, a lot of administration didn't really get a lot of their days used, their vacation days, so they had more days than typically that are carried over. Usually 10 days are carried over. So, Mr. Bolendorf came up with a plan that within two years, we'll get back to that stance where it would be 10-day carryover. Is that correct, Mr. Bolendorf, 10 days? Okay. Summer hours, the administration reviewed the summer schedule for 2022. Will continue as the district did last year, Monday through Thursday. Staff will make up that day for a longer day, Monday through Thursday. Actually, a lot of districts do have that, you save on energy, air conditioning, all those kinds of things, and before we used to come in for a half a day, so now it's just Monday through Thursday like last year. I brought up anonymous letters. I received an anonymous letter, just me, and I was concerned procedurally how we handled that. I will say that my gut reaction to it was, well, why entertain an anonymous letter? I did some research with that and I changed my thinking. Sometimes someone might send an anonymous letter and they may put things in that letter that are very important to look at, and depending what's in the letter, the superintendent can investigate it. So, I kind of changed my mind on that, that it could have some relevancy to it. Obviously, a big part of our job is to make policy, and down the road, we may not be here, superintendent's going to change, boards are going to change, but we have to have some kind of consistency. Right now, we don't have a specific policy on how to deal with an anonymous letter, so I have brought that up to talk about it. We really didn't spend a lot of time, I just, because I put it on the agenda kind of late and we had other meetings. I also brought up town hall meetings. I recall when I sat in the audience, there was a concern that when you come up and address the board, there's no back and forth, and that's true. You know, there's some boards that only have one public session. Basically, we're not really supposed to engage in conversations back and forth. So, a town hall would be something where our community can come out and talk about concerns, and that would be a back and forth. So, right now, I put that on the agenda, we're going to come back to it. I know that Dr. Alexander had labeled a town hall, and that would fit a town hall, however, it was more specific to the HIB process. So, what I'm thinking in my mind is a town hall that would be somewhat open for concerns, and depending on how we do that, there's some places where you would register what you're going to say ahead of time, et cetera. So, there are two things that I brought up to the student activities, because it's basically about communication. That committee is about communication. We also looked at the district calendar, it was noted that next year, I believe, that Monday after New Year's is an official holiday off, we were going to be coming back to school, so I think that was cleared up. So, I will ask anybody on the committee if there's anything I missed. Okay, all right, thank you.
Any questions on the report? Thank you, Connie. Moving on to Business Committee, Julie, would you like to give a report?
Which items from student activities are we voting on tonight? Connie? Which items from the, are we voting on tonight? Out of your committee?
Come on in.
Yeah.
What items were voting on the SAC committee?
As you stated, I wasn't there, so, and I didn't get anyone, no one called me back.
Okay, I'll turn it over to the chairperson, Renee.
What items? Yeah, I thought the student dis enrollment, isn't that on there for tonight? You didn't mention that.
The number one.
Okay. Okay, so that's...
We didn't talk about district enrollment.
That's under student activities on the.
We didn't discuss it.
I have the business and finance report. So there were no capital project updates, no policy review. Something of interest to the public would be that we're holding the final, we're holding a special budget meeting on the 28th of April. So we have our regular work session that Tuesday, and then on the 28th, there'll be an additional budget meeting. So that last month, we approved the tentative budget, which was sent forward to the county superintendent. The county superintendent then looks at that, kind of gets their ducks in a row, and then sends it back to us as approved or not. We can then continue to make changes if need be, and then the public can have a hearing on that budget, which is your local tax levy on the 28th of April. So mark your calendars for that. Next week, you'll be voting on two items that were discussed in the business committee. One is ARP homeless funding. So Janine made the committee aware that we've been allocated $29,989 in ARP homeless funding. So we will be submitting an application for this soon, and a resolution will be on the agenda in two weeks at our meeting. Right? You'll have it in two weeks, I think, Janine. The planned use of funds to support transportation of homeless students. So that's great, $30,000 to transport homeless students, which is wonderful. Also, next meeting, not next week, next week is spring break, but our next meeting, we will be voting on the, to approve the RFPs for engineer and auditor. The RFPs went out for that. Only one firm applied for each. So they're on the agenda for next week. Tonight, the only item you're voting on is the audit approval. I want to say thank you to Janine, or we should say thank you to Janine, Harry Finkel, and I'm blanking. Patrice, Patrice, for having an audit that really had no findings whatsoever for us to correct and change. So that's a huge feat. The auditors from Bowman come in and live in the offices here and ask for documents so that they can make sure that we're doing everything well, and we're going to be accepting that tonight. There were no findings or recommendations in the report. Mr. Bolendorf updated us on the vacation day carryover that Ms. Baker mentioned, and also the summer hours. Any questions on what you're voting on tonight or next time? Thank you.
Thank you, Julie. We'll be going to instruction and curriculum, Stacy?
Do you guys hear me? Okay. You're right, Jess, you already did a nice job talking about the summer program. You beat me to it. Using New Jersey Virtual Schools and the two stipends to oversee it, using the S.R. funds. But I thought your question was well said and smart, makes sense. We talked about a policy which Connie mentioned, talking about using remote instruction towards 180 days if an emergency declaration happens, that everything will continue and we'll move on. They had to kind of redo that after COVID, because when COVID happened, it kind of switched that every remote day can count towards 180 days, and now it's going back to, if there's another emergency or reason for a closure, then those days would count. For under finance, the Perkins Fiscal Year 2020 Grant Amendment, if there's a transfer over 10%, we need to approve that. And we need roughly $15,000 to be transferred to enable the district to replace failing video equipment for the TV production program, which is great, because that's one of our academies, so that's fantastic. And then also, May 8th, it's Special Education Week, which is fantastic, and we just want to kind of highlight that, that that's coming up. That's pretty much it.
Thank you for the report. We have any questions under old business?
I have a comment to make. I don't know if you can hear me. I don't know if my mic is working. So I just have to make this statement. Julie, I feel that you've undermined the integrity of this board. You made it clear in your emails that feelings that the Republicans are aka quote, "red hat," who are sheep that consume biased media and don't give a crap about the kids, close quote. You also stated, quote, "Connie and anyone else running will split the D vote," close quote. There are many more inappropriate statements in your emails. School boards should be nonpartisan, and with these statements, I question whether you are.
I appreciate. I appreciate the opportunity to talk about that, Elaine, and I apologize to you again. I want to clarify, because I don't know why Ron did not put the entire email out there. The email starts off, "I'm emailing you at your personal email address, so this isn't official board correspondence." Then you held it for months and came out right after I took your friend off negotiations, which was the right thing to do at the time. So if people who are elected stop doing the right thing because they're scared of people in the audience coming up and saying something, that's when we have a real problem in America in terms of the politics that you're talking about. First of all, the Township GOP or someone sent an email out about me to their distribution list. That seems pretty political to me. The red hat comment was what the people who ran against me the previous year when you ran, they called themselves that, Elaine. Your petition, let me finish. Your petition was not signed at a Republican committee meeting. Theirs was. Every single name was the same, and it was most of the people I'm looking at in the audience right now.
Actually, Julie, I'm going to have to cut you off. We really shouldn't have dialogue back and forth with the board members.
We're allowed to have dialogue. The point, the point, I want to answer her question. I'm answering her question. She's offended because she thinks, she's offended because she thinks I called her a red hat. And my point is, those people called themselves that. It was on social media. They talked about painting the board red. Can you imagine if I talked about painting the board blue?
I think we should, Julie, I think we should stay on our agenda for this evening.
All right, then I'll talk to Elaine, I'll talk to you after the meeting, Elaine, but I do not think of you that way. I do not think of you that way, and I don't, those are not my words.
Do we have any discussion items?
Wait a minute. I have old business.
Oh, you do? I'm sorry, Connie, go ahead.
I think going along with what Mrs. Clancy just said, I'd like to make a motion that we take a vote of no confidence in Julie Kuzempel based on her actions and what was conveyed in that email. There's nothing that one could say to take away what occurred. I have, I have emails that you gave me to support the fact that it would exonerate you. And I kind of find it really troubling, where you talk about the fact that you have a strategy and that you're strategic. You say in these emails, July 23rd. I'm given a rationale for why I'm going to put forth a motion that have a lack of confidence in you. Okay.
Well, first of all, there's a motion on the floor to take a vote of no confidence against a fellow board member. Is that the motion? Fellow board member being Julie Kuzempel?
Yes.
Do we have a second? All right. We have a motion and a second. We'll open it up for discussion.
I just have a question. I thought, was it Mr. Baldassano? I'm sorry if I killed your name. Is that it? Is that right? I'm sorry. You had sent out those informative emails with the board meeting to Wash from Pleasant, North Jersey-ish, which I thought was really, really helpful. It was, I don't know exactly what happened, because it didn't go into like specifics, but it did speak to a troubling situation that apparently was overcoming the board, and, you know, this has been a really hard, you know, few weeks. But what they did was Julie stepped down from being president, which was the right thing to do. And what they did as far as looking at whatever incident happened that was found to be, you know, unethical and, or whatever they felt, they moved it to an ethics committee, which I thought last week, I wasn't here, Mr. Bentley was going to look into going to the Ethics Commission to move the situation, move on to that, so they could then move forward and do an investigation, which I think makes sense, because what they feel like this is doing, I just, no one says that email was right. The behavior of the meeting was wrong, the email was wrong. We know that. But I think, I'm not a judge, I'm not a jury. I think we need to move that and let them take care of that. I'm upset about it. I think we're all upset about it. I think someone else needs to take care of it and say, yes, no, maybe, whatever. But I know the vote of no confidence you can do for a presidency, but I didn't know that that could be done just for a person. I like the idea of moving it to an ethics committee, because, I mean, I don't agree with it. It didn't speak for me, and it wasn't right.
Okay, Ray, I brought the motion up. The email was not on the half of the board.
Excuse me. Anyone else want to?
Yeah, I do. I do. I want to finish what I have to say.
Go ahead, Connie.
Okay. I bring this up. With Robert's rules, you can bring up a vote of no confidence. It doesn't carry anything. It's not a vote of no confidence that you must step down. It's purely a vote of no confidence. What we talked about at the last meeting is for Mr. Bentley, and I'll probably ask him when we're finished this, to look into South Brunswick when they made a resolution about the behavior of their board president. They took, they made a resolution as a board totally to move their concerns to the commission on ethics violation. One could submit an ethics violation individually, but what they chose to do, to do it as a board collectively. And that is what we asked Mr. Bentley to look into. The reason why I bring up the vote of no confidence is because I'm concerned about things that were said. For instance, in this email, July 23rd, I've recruited most people who ran for the last three years personally. I asked Brian, because he was on the Equity Committee, Kath, Stacy DeMayo, our kids went to school together. I asked Ray, okay? The board has been compromised. We, and someone just mentioned Mr. Balizaro's email. And I understand that email came to, I know it came to us, but I also understand it was out on a Facebook page. But remember now, not, the whole community's not on that Facebook page. And there were certain things that were said in that email to give us food for thought, and I'm sure our attorney will weigh in on it. I bring up the vote of no confidence in order for us to move forward cleanly, okay? I appreciate the fact that Mrs. Kuzempel stepped down as president. She's still on the board. I have a problem with that. I will work with her, but I do have a personal problem, and I want to, I want to bring it up to a vote, and everyone could cast their vote based on how they feel. She has shaken my confidence in our ability to move forward, especially when we're talking about the search committee. There needs to be a clean break, I believe. So that's what I have to say.
Anyone else want to speak?
Yeah, if I could add, just for the record, I didn't sign up for this. I mean, this is getting to be ridiculous, to be honest with you. I, you know, I was not here for the April, I mean, the March 22nd meeting. It's unfortunate what happened. You know, I have people on this board that I truly respect, albeit red hats or Democrats, whatever the case may be. I'm doing this for the kids. That's the only reason I got involved from the very beginning. And to be honest with you, we need to move on as a board. Now, how do we, I mean, we're all professionals. We're all adults. We need to figure it out, because this is getting to be really ridiculous. I should not have to wake up in the middle of the night thinking about board meetings. This is ridiculous. And we need to figure it out. So, you know, I don't know if this needs to be a kumbaya moment. We need to get, I don't know what the heck we're going to do, but I did not sign up for this, all right? I'm really, I'm really focused on this superintendent search because it's that important. I've had conversations with members of this board as to how we move forward cleanly. Connie, to your point, you know, I think we can do this in a way that's not compromised, and that's why we're bringing in the folks next week or in two weeks from now, and then even looking at an executive search firm. But we need to move on. I mean, this is getting really old to me, and I get it. I get, there were some real hurt feelings, and we'll need to figure it out and move on. But I did not sign up for this, so I just want to go on record and say that.
Thank you, Brian. Julie, you want to address that?
Thank you, Brian.
I have nothing else to, I'm not even going to bother defending anything anymore. I actually have the same concern as Jessica about summer, because I have two kids that are close to failing. I would like to talk about something like that, like using some of the S.R. funds to actually have in-person summer help for my kids and other people's kids. Does anyone feel like talking about that? I mean, can you put that in IA to maybe be a topic of conversation? Like, it feels silly even bringing it up at this point when we're reading emails, but I mean.
No, I said that, she brought that up, and I said, yeah, that's a really good point, and I will, for sure.
I have nothing else to say.
Seeing there's no other discussion, can we have a roll call? Vote on the motion? Connie's motion.
I'm abstaining. Abstain. Mrs. Baker?
Yes.
I'm going to abstain on this one.
Abstain. Motion doesn't carry.
Have other old business?
You have other old business?
I have other old business. I'd like to bring up for discussion among the six people that are on the search committee. And looking at board policy 01, get the number here, the exact number for you. 0155. It states that when you have a committee, the committee votes for the chair. We did not do that on the search committee. I think basically last week, Mr. DeNovi, you mentioned that you were sort of the lead because you were the vice president. But we really never took a vote on who we wanted the chair to be.
That would be for matters of Board of Education meetings solely. If Julie's not able to be president because she had to step down and she actually recludes herself, then the vice president automatically takes over when the president is not either here or not able. That's what I meant when I said to you that for items that come up about the superintendent, from here on in, would go through the vice president, which at the time was me.
Yeah, I understand that, that you would step in for the president. If you look at the policy, the policy says that the committee votes for the chair. Is there any, I'm new to this board. Is there anybody that's been around that can confirm that that's true? The policy.
I don't, you could take a vote on who you want to be the chair of the committee right now if you want to just cut to the chase of where you're going. Technically, the board president and board vice president assign the committee members and the chairs of the committees. Every member of the board is on the superintendent committee except for Stacy and I, so.
Yeah, I understand that, but I'm saying, then maybe we need to change the policy. I don't have the policy right here in front of me, but it says that the committee picks the chair. It doesn't say that the president says who the chair is. That's what the policy says.
What, are you, what policy are you referring to?
0155.
The bylaw?
It's 0155. Just plug that in, and it comes up.
Duties of the board president and vice president. That's the policy you're referring to?
I'd be happy to take the lead, to be the chair of the search committee, and I'd like to have Elaine and Connie be part of the committee as well, and maybe the new board member that we're going to, I guess, interview in a week or two. How about we do that?
What I wanted to say along with the chair. about, is that maybe we need to make a smaller group just to get this process moving and the entire group will be involved in looking at the candidates, the interview questions, and all those kinds of things. Because otherwise, that's why we had to have a special meeting last week, because we couldn't meet without making it public. That would be number one. Number two would be, who would be, who would be the chair?
Connie, I'd be happy to take the lead.
Well, I would too.
Okay.
I would too.
I think you'd...
I would, I am the only board member, the only board member, that has not worked with a person, why, why we're concerned about what Julie said in that email. I'm the only one that has not had any dealings with that person.
Okay, I think where we're at is, I'm going to ask the board for a consensus on this. So that the superintendent search committee will be Brian, Stacy, and Connie. Brian, Elaine, and Connie. At this time, Brian, you had indicated that you would like to take the lead on this?
If I could co-chair with Connie, co-chair.
That's fine. Connie, do you accept that?
Yes.
Okay, so from here on in, you will be dealing with the superintendent search, the three of you, and we have co-chairs. So, in case that either Brian or Connie are not here, Brian, you would get, give the report if Connie's not here and vice versa. If not, you two guys work it out as far as who wants to give the report as we move forward. And also, once we have school boards at our next meeting come, I would like you two to get involved and whomever you choose to be the spokesperson, all comments from the public, back and forth on that will go through that committee.
Yeah, I just want to make sure that the rest of the board members are on board with this, as well as the fact, I have to mention to Elaine, Elaine has a, has a trip that was planned, is that correct? You are going to be out at a significant time when we're going to be working with this search committee. I'd like to ask, I would like to have Renee on that search committee, the team. Because Elaine, I would absolutely want you, but you're not going to be around.
Right, I will be reachable, but I think it's a good idea to have Renee on the committee. And Brian, I just, he just...
And it's not four, right? That's only four.
Well, we can have four people. Renee, would you accept to be on?
It's fine, yeah, it's fine.
You'll be on?
It's fine.
Okay, good, yay.
Finally.
Okay, so...
So, again, you, as a board president, you're in charge of...
Yes, I know.
Appointing, in this case, an ad hoc committee...
Yes.
For the superintendent search.
For the superintendent search.
So, just make sure it's...
And I do believe that that ad hoc committee will consist of Brian, Elaine, Connie, and Renee. And I'll reiterate, from this meeting forward, anything involving the superintendent search will go through that committee, including, at our next session, all dialogue with New Jersey school boards. And actually during that, whoever takes the lead with that can open and close the meeting to the public because we will have a separate opening so that the public can get involved with questioning the representative from school boards.
Right, and at that meeting, Stacy and Julie will be excusing themselves, that's correct.
That is correct. That is, that's been what we've been doing all along.
They've been excused from executive session. If you're going to have a meeting with the New Jersey School Board Association rep in public session, Stacy and Julie have a right to be here. They should not participate in any way in that discussion, but it is going to be a public meeting. If you're going to go in executive session to talk about the various proposals from New Jersey school boards, Stacy and Julie will be excused from that executive session.
Okay.
And Ray, the presentation from the New Jersey School Board rep is going to be before the full board, not just the committee.
No, it's for, it's for the full board and everyone in the public. And it will be opened, because I already spoke with the person who will be here giving the presentation, and I asked her if it was okay if she took questions from the public and she said absolutely. She wants to make sure that everyone understands what the search will be, how it will be conducted, and all the components of the search. So, any other questions on this?
Yes, and my expectation would be that the two members that excuse themselves, they will not engage in conversations with any of the members that are on the search committee about the search at all, nothing.
I was actually going to say, if you, I mean, as a committee, would prefer we're not even to be at that meeting with them, that's fine. If you have...
I don't have a, I don't have a problem as long as there's no communication going on.
No, that's what recusing yourself means.
However, there's going to be other agenda items. We really should have the full board here. And again, you could, you can, you know, we're not going to be voting on anything. We, we will go in the closed session to vote on the contract. Joe, can they be on that or that's just the contract?
Stacy and Julie cannot go in executive session if you're going to talk about the various proposals.
Okay.
If they want to excuse themselves during the presentation, they have every right to do that.
Okay.
But they don't have to be checked out.
That's what I was asking, if that was, if they, that would be preferred. You guys can talk about it, let me know.
And when you come back and vote on whatever proposal you decide, obviously they're not going to be able to vote on that.
All right, so we have a firm understanding how we're moving forward with the committee.
Okay.
All right, then. Any other questions?
I have one other item on old business.
Go ahead.
Okay. To the members of the, of the public, I, I'm filling in on a position where Mrs. Cavalo left and her, her term would end in December. I haven't made a decision whether or not I'm going to run yet in November. I haven't, I haven't decided on that yet. But I think it's important for me to at least share with, with the public about a comment that was made about me at the meeting on March 22nd. There were things, three things that were cited, and I'm going to address one of them right now. It was said publicly that I, single-handedly, ran up a $3,000 legal bill in negotiations. I want to, I want to give you a timeline. I was sworn in on November 30th. There was a board meeting on December 8th. Oh, I'm sorry, there was a, a negotiation session on, on December 8th. So, I was sworn in on the 30th. There was a board WTEA negotiation session on 12/8. Obviously, that was set up prior to me being selected as the chair of negotiations about two or three days after I was sworn in. There was a work session on December 14th. There was a party of sorts on December 16th where Remington and Verdic engineers had a sort of holiday party for the Board of Education and town council at the Tinder Bar on Cross Keys Road. There was a meeting on December 21st, and we had a reorganization meeting on the 4th. By January 10th, I was off negotiations. So, there wasn't a lot of meetings to talk about a lot of things. I do have the invoices of the legal amount of money that was spent on negotiations. And basically, how the invoice reads, it identifies, because we have a board policy, there are certain people that can contact the attorneys. I, as chair of, of the committee, I had the authority from Julie that if I needed to ask a question, I could. So, people who are identified in the policy, such as the superintendent, the BA, the assistant superintendent, and there's one other person, the BA, the assistant superintendent, the superintendent, oh, and the board president. And they have to keep a log. When they call the attorney, they have to keep a log, and I guess they keep a log. So, when we get billed, there's a monthly log. And I, I am not going to go specifically, I can, but I'm not, but I'm going to let you know this. In the month of December, there were two emails of information, and with the WTEA, that totaled $90. The WTPA, at the time, in December, they were negotiating. I asked for some things like, what was the supposal, what was the...
Connie, I'm going to have to interrupt you there. You cannot get into the specifics of what was in those bills.
Okay, all right, so I...
Nothing, no problem with the, with the amounts.
Okay.
But the details of that, that's attorney-client privilege, which the board owns, not you.
Okay, so I won't get into details, but I asked a question that should be, should have been readily available, but that cost $72. So, that meant that in December, $72 plus 90, that's about $160. In January... It was another $90. So, that was the total that identified me as spending, okay? Less than $300 out of a $3,000 bill. I can, I can give the, the amount of money because that's, we, we voted on that.
You can't.
I can, okay. I, I could do that, okay. So, in other words, in December, the WTPA was billed for the month of December $630 and the WTEA $1,861. Of that was about $150 on my part as chair. In January, the bill was WTPA $504 and the WTEA $1,710. Now, interestingly enough, I want to point this out to you. I noticed that in policy 0155, that if you're the chair, you can coordinate the dates of when you're going to meet. In other words, if someone's going to call and say, I need to change a date, the chair would be an appropriate person to call. And then the chair could let Elaine know, let the administration know there was a change of date, let the board know. Just so you're aware, there was $234 billed about the change of date. Correspondents here, calling, back and forth and back and forth. So, basically, when I brought that up, and I, and I never had a chance to really pursue it because I was off within a month, we spent $234, which I could have done and not had, had it been billed to the attorney. So, I just want to make the record clear that I didn't run up a $3,000 bill. Thank you.
Any other items under old business? Any discussion items? Okay, report of the superintendent? Can I get a motion to approve items one through three under the report of the superintendent?
Second.
Can I get discussion on the, discussion on the report? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Ms. Guzempel?
Yes.
Dr. Ellis?
Yes.
Mrs. Gallinero?
Yes.
Ms. Pollard?
Yes.
Mrs. Baker?
Yes.
Mrs. Baker?
Yes.
Mrs. Clancy?
Yes.
Ms. DeMayo?
Yes.
Mr. DeNovi?
Yes.
Motion is approved. Under policy, we have one item for first reading. I get a motion on approving policy, item number one?
Second.
Roll call, please. Uh, excuse me, any discussion on that? Seeing none, roll call.
Dr. Ellis?
Yes.
Mrs. Gallinero?
Yes.
Ms. Pollard?
Yes.
Mrs. Baker?
Yes.
Mrs. Clancy?
Yes.
Ms. DeMayo?
Yes.
Ms. Guzempel?
Yes.
Mr. DeNovi?
Yes.
Motion carries. Uh, we have one item under student activities. I get a motion to approve number one under student activities.
Second.
We have a motion second. Roll call, please.
Mrs. Gallinero?
Yes.
Ms. Pollard?
Yes.
Mrs. Baker?
Yes.
Mrs. Clancy?
Yes.
Ms. DeMayo?
Yes.
Ms. Guzempel?
Yes.
Mr. DeNovi?
Yes.
Motion carries. Under human resources, can I get a motion to approve items one through 32?
Second.
Any discussion?
It's, 16 is deleted, so it's one through 15 and 17 through 32.
Do we delete one?
Yes, 16 and 32.
One through 15 and 17 through 32? Julie, are you amending that motion for that?
No. Um, that was...
Just called for a motion.
Okay.
I mean, I'll move it forward and make that motion.
Okay. Um, we have a motion with numbers one through 15 and 17 for 32. How about a second on that one, please?
Second.
Roll call.
Ms. Pollard?
Yes.
Mrs. Baker?
Yes.
Mrs. Clancy?
Yes.
Ms. DeMayo?
Yes.
Ms. Guzempel?
Yes.
Mr. DeNovi?
Yes.
Motion carries. Under finance, we have items number one and two. Can I get a motion to approve?
Second.
Second. Roll call, please.
Ms. Pollard?
Yes.
Mrs. Baker?
Yes.
Mrs. Clancy?
Yes.
Ms. DeMayo?
Yes.
Ms. Guzempel?
Yes.
Dr. Ellis?
Yes.
Mrs. Gallinero?
Yes.
Mr. DeNovi?
Yes, motion carries.
Under finance, we have items number one and two. Can I get a motion to approve? Second.
Second.
Roll call, please. Uh, discussion on those items? No? Roll call.
Mrs. Baker?
Yes.
Mrs. Clancy?
Yes.
Ms. DeMayo?
Yes.
Ms. Guzempel?
Yes.
Dr. Ellis?
Yes.
Mrs. Gallinero?
Yes.
Ms. Pollard?
Yes.
Mr. DeNovi?
Yes, motion carries.
Um, at this time, can I get a motion to open the meeting to the public?
Second.
We have new business? There's nothing listed here.
No, you may ask if there's new business.
Okay. Um, does anyone have new business to bring before the board? Motion to open the meeting to the public.
Second.
Meeting is now open to the public. I'll start with the first ones that were submitted earlier.
I don't know, there were a lot of people that put their cards in before me, I don't know how I got in there. My topic happens to be something that I've crisscrossed over about the last week and a half, two weeks. And I'm going to add a new word to the red hats. It's called the groomers. And a groomer's one who builds trust with an emotional binding to their students in a way that they can exploit and manipulate them. a way that they can exploit and manipulate them. And every time I come here, I feel on some of the topics that we address, it's like a battle for our kids. Who owns our kids? Who's in control? Seemingly, it's not the parents, because the parents are seemingly told that when the kid reaches the school door, they take over or you take over. And I disagree with that. Murphy, our illustrious Governor, has way back in 2020 come up with a first and second grade curriculum. And I don't know how many of you have read the curriculum or have addressed it. I don't know how many of you have read it, addressed it, and then went back to the Governor and said, "What are you doing?" Why are our first and second graders dealing with gender issues? They're lucky, they're fighting for their neighbor to trade their lunch for the lunch that their partner has. They could care less about gender. Get them outside to recreation, whatever. Then I come across, and there was a lot more to the gender issue that you can do your own investigation, but I just came across the fifth-grade agenda for sex issues. One that promotes puberty, puberty blockers, masturbation, and they tell you you should be doing it three times a day to eliminate your stress. Graphic videos, and if you need to look up any of the videos, you can look up a place called amaze.com. And then you can then go to, go through the graphics that they give you in the cartoons to make it look like it's childlike, but the topics they're giving to you are way over the adults, for the adults. It's up to me as a parent, grandparent, to be the one that discusses with my kids, or my grandkids, depending on who's in charge, what goes on in my bedroom and the relationships that my kids might have in regards to sex issues, not the teachers. I'm wondering, we send our teachers to college, to universities, and they come back with high-level degrees. And I have yet to find out if any of the first and second graders in this district have psychological or psychiatric backgrounds to be able to discuss all of these gender issues that the kids are going to confront. Along with that, the fifth-grade topics include some of the following, and then I'll just leave the topics. Oral, vaginal, anal sex, masturbation, virginity, graphic ID, sex orientation, being gay, puberty, pronouns, porn, erections, rape, abortion. This is what our kids are going to be confronted with? Wait a minute, weren't our kids out of school for a while? Don't they need the extra work on math, English, social studies, and science? That time would be a lot more appropriate than having to deal with these topics, which should be left at my door. So I hope that somewhere along the line, this Board can come up with some kind of a resolution, and I know we've done resolutions way back in the past with Mrs. Murphy and Mr. Ross, and write to the Governor and our legislators and say, "Let's take a second look and back off of this 2022 curriculum." And I understand elections have consequences. That's why Mr. Murphy is capable of choosing the members on the State School Board Association that comes up with some of these topics.
Sorry, sir, your time is up.
Wow, okay.
Thank you.
You all make it a good one now.
Thank you, Mr. Scheidel. I just want to address some issues and just make sure that we're setting the record straight. And we also have an opportunity to have a better understanding of the direction of the district as it relates to this topic. First of all, the state cannot develop a curriculum. They develop standards. It's up to the individual district to build a curriculum around those standards. Many of the topics that you mentioned, particularly at the end, are not mentioned in any of the standards. Masturbation is. How it's mentioned, just to be clear, is in the fifth-grade standard, and it reads as this. Relating to the core idea of puberty as a time of physical and social, emotional changes, explain common human sexual development and the role of hormones. Examples, romantic and sexual feelings, masturbation, mood swings, timing of pubertal onset. These are examples that don't need to be adopted into a curriculum. The standards don't guide the curriculum, district guides the curriculum, all right? The page, amaze.com, is filtered from our websites. It is not in the standards, nor is it in any curriculum. If it's being used elsewhere by some other district, I'm not aware of that, but in this particular case, we're not planning to go down that road. Our kids don't even have access to that website. Even the teachers in our schools don't have access to that website at this present time. So moving forward, the plan was for that curriculum to be rewritten because health is not up for adoption, so it has to be a curriculum rewrite. A team will be put together. I think it's important in this case in terms of openness and people's involvement in this community, because I do agree with you that every school district should be representative of the community and the ideals that they uphold, that we involve some parent groups involved in that committee in the development, and then the eventual curriculum rolled out. We would be very, very concerned about making sure anything that we're teaching our kids is age-appropriate. We want to protect innocence, but at the same time, we do want to deliver information that is pertinent and helps in their growth and development, all right? So collectively, as a community, those things should be worked on and decided. And that's the direction I believe that this district will go in, all right? And we will be bringing out more information as it relates to that, without question. Thank you. I'll talk to you afterwards if you'd like.
Mary Scheidel.
Mary Scheidel, teacher for thirty-four years, twenty-sixth in Washington Township, love Washington Township. Tutored your daughter for a while. I do recognize some of you people. My, that's not true topic. My concern is school safety. That's why I'm here, watching the news and what's going on. My concern is right now, do we have metal detectors in our school?
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear that.
Metal detectors. What's happening in our schools? Recently, there was a knifing at the high school. How'd the knife get into the high school? That's what I'm concerned about. You watch the news, and I don't want this to happen in Township. My grandkids go here, I taught here for twenty-six years. My kids went here, and I want to know from the Board of Education, what are your plans for protecting our kids? Do we have police officers? My concern is what you see going on in the area, I don't want somebody coming in our school with a knife and killing my kid. So my question is, are we going to have metal detectors or what are we going to have? What's the protection for our kids? I'm asking a question, I would like your answer.
I just need to know if you're done, then I can kind of...
I am done, I am done, yes.
Happy to answer. Thank you, Mrs. Scheidel. First of all, you used the word or the phrase "knifing." Knifing to me means somebody got stabbed with a knife. That has not happened in our schools. I don't know where you've heard that from.
Yes, it did, the high school, someone was knifed.
We can't have a back and forth, but I can assure you that that has not happened. The high school principal is sitting here, nobody has been stabbed with a knife in Washington Township High School. I don't know where you have that information from.
Seven stitches? Seven stitches?
We can't go back and forth.
I'm not aware of it, and I'll be happy to entertain whatever information you have to either refute it or to support it, but I'm telling you honestly and looking you that I am not aware of any such incident in Washington Township, and I want to make that clear, all right? As it relates again...
Can I have evidence on that?
Excuse me, there's no back and forth. Mr. Bolendorf is addressing your questions.
Mrs. Scheidel, I'll be happy to talk to you afterwards. You can tell me who you think this is, and I'll be happy to get back to you, I really will.
I'll give you a name, that's okay.
But not here in public, we'll do it after the meeting if that's okay, all right? All right, if you want to take a seat, I can answer the rest of your questions with regards to metal detectors and the like.
So you can't talk about metal detectors?
I'm sorry, but you can't, you've had your time. Your questions are being addressed at this time, and an offer was made to even discuss further with you after the meeting. Mr. Bolendorf, can you please...
And I don't mean that to be impolite, it's just not my rule to be able to break the policy. So let me respond to your questions. We have seven SROs on our schools at this particular point in time, thanks to the generosity and support of our community. We have police officers in our buildings, seven of them at this particular point. We have a very advanced security system involved in all of our buildings with security cameras and web-based security in terms of our teachers' ability to communicate issues on the spot as they occur. We don't have metal detectors. We haven't talked about metal detectors in a long time. The last time we did that was at a town hall that we held here shortly after Columbine, where there was a general concern as to whether or not we use. If you look at a lot of school districts throughout the country, in many of those cases where they exist, there's no, there's no specific cure for that. And the major reason I say that, you have metal detectors, all right? I want to make this clear, because I want to try to make sense of what I'm about to say. Thank you, I appreciate that, all right? Metal detectors work for the people that follow the rules. The kids are going to come through the doors and they're going to avail themselves to the metal detectors. People that are going to look to try to get something into a school is problematic for us for many reasons. One of those is every single one of our doors have to be able to be egressed. You can't lock them from the inside going out. Quite often, that's the reality. And quite often, our students sometimes happen to be, sometimes are our most vulnerable line of defense because they're nice kids. Somebody will come to the door and they'll open the door, all right? That's the kinds of things that we deal with. That's why we have so many surveillance cameras and things going on in our buildings. So, and honestly, the best source of security that we have is this constant talking to our kids about, you see something, you hear something, you say something. We protect one another, all right? So we can talk about and do an investigation and look at data as to how really metal detectors actually protect. I use Columbine as a perfect example. In Columbine, the shooting started before the kids even entered the building, all right? Metal detectors would not have stopped that incident from occurring, all right? And these are the realities that we deal with. So we don't want to deal in what we might think will happen. We want to investigate, and we have, and put measures into place that we believe do happen. So that's, you know, where we are, and we're doing everything that we can to keep our buildings safe, and we believe generally they are safe. Kids...
Be proactive, proactive, proactive.
Okay, we're going to move on.
Wait till something happens in Township. Wait till something happens.
Scott Ben?
Good evening. Scott Ben with Wedgewood Section of the Town. In light of the information that came out at last meeting about the emails between Julia Kuzempel and Ron Lucchini, and Julie's subsequent resigning from her presidency this evening, I would like to go on record and publicly say that I believe that she should resign fully from this Board. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Thank you for your comments.
Good evening. My name is Mark Lopez, and I'm a teacher and association representative at Orchard Valley Middle School. I came to tonight's Board meeting to share some gratitude, positivity, and hopes for the future. I would like to highlight one of the many great things that occur here in Township Schools. Every year, throughout the year, our schools have school safety team committee meetings made up of staff volunteer participants to discuss, plan, and implement lessons for the children that teach them that human beings vary in a multitude of ways, and that human beings should act with integrity and treat each other with dignity and respect despite differences. These lessons are part of what our district calls "Building Better People." The existence of school safety team committees is mandated by the New Jersey Anti-Bullying Bill of Rights law, but what is not mandated is our participation in the Anti-Defamation League's "No Place for Hate" school program. This program provides school safety team committees with age and grade level appropriate lessons that help children to understand the importance and value of mutual respect and treatment with dignity of human beings that differ based upon race, religion, gender, sexual orientation, disability, et cetera. I wish to thank Mr. Bolendorf, his administrative leadership team, and the Board of Education members for these programs. Being gay and Puerto Rican, I was not always treated with dignity and respect by others throughout my life. Those programs like these make positive impacts in the lives of children. It is my hope that our district's administrative leadership team and the Board of Education members will continue with the vision of excellence through equity, engagement, and environment, and will continue with the Building Better People and the No Place for Hate initiatives. Thank you for all that you do on behalf of the children and the staff of Washington Township Public Schools.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lopez.
I'm going to cut to the chase real fast. Mrs. Kuzempel, I listened to you while you were, I guess, resigning from the presidency, and I didn't hear, I heard the reason for your resigning as being, you know, family, time, and that sort of thing. I did not hear that you did anything wrong in terms of your email, okay? So from that standpoint alone, I have an official, I guess, Code of Ethics complaint that I lodged today. I guess you'll be getting a copy of it soon, I guess they sent it to you, or whatever. And I can't pull it back, right? Because moving from one chair to over there, and speaking of friends, as you made a comment about that I, basically, this was a motive on my part, because you removed Connie Baker from the Chair of Negotiations. I could care less about negotiations or the fact that you removed her. In fact, I told Baker she shouldn't even be on the Board, she should just run in November and prove a point, but she did what she wanted to do, that's her business, all right? So in terms of that, I could care less, because the negotiations in this town are a joke anyway, for years historically. But you have shown no remorse about the statements you made, and again, you used this fairy tale that it's context, that your statements were legitimate because of the context of what I wrote prior to you in that email. So I'm going to let the public know that the next meeting, I will bring the context of that email, and you can make a judgment, you know, you're critical thinkers, that's what we try to get the kids to reach that highest level of valuation based on synthesis and application and all those things. I'm going to let you decide whether that email that I sent her had anything to do with the comments that would provoke those comments from her, okay? I'll tell you this, I just glanced at it over there, but I don't have my glasses, but basically, it was about the principle of the middle school, Orchard Valley, and her management style, and that I felt this Board of Education was full of frauds, okay? I don't know if I used that word, and that the whole emphasis on, call them friends, not boys and girls, and all that was a distraction from the political actions of the Board of Education, okay? That you get these people who come out here, and I did refer to them as kooks, because I think people who think Democrats eat babies, that Trump, the election was stolen, I do think that's kooky, all right? But I don't think it's kooky if somebody comes out here, talks about, like that one woman that came up here, read whatever it was about what was in the curriculum, and that was real, okay? But when some guy gets up here, starts talking about penises, and then admits the month after that it was all, you know, a joke, then I do call them kooks, all right? But in that email, there is nothing, nothing, that would provoke that kind of statement, all right? And it's all about this Board of Education, specific members of this Board of Education who promote this far-right, woke, extreme, politically correct stuff that I think brings these other people out and distracts from the eyes that you guys have really on the prize, which is all politics, which is why you moving to that seat and moving this guy in there is nothing but a joke, all right? So I'm going to... So I'm going to provide the information that she says was context that legitimized her statements. And I'm going to tell you right now, there's nothing there. All right? Nothing there. I'm like I'm trying to trick the Board of Education. And by the way, several board members were privy to those emails anyway. Maybe Mr. Danovi wasn't on the list. I don't know. I think Mrs. Gallinari, you may not have been on the list, but most of you were. So when I send it to the board, you know, it is what it is. All right? And you can make a decision on that. And maybe that'll, maybe you'll come back next meeting and you'll vote for that no vote of confidence instead of being shills for the Democrat Party in this town. All right? Because that's what I think you are at this point in time. All right? The other thing, and I want to also address Mr. Ellis, okay? You seem like a reasonable human being, but, you know, this, well, let's move forward routine. It doesn't work that way. All right? It doesn't work that way. You don't politicize the board, come out and show partisan politics in relation to the board, politicize the hiring of a superintendent, and then think it's all going to go away. Until she gets off this board, I don't really care. Until she gets off this board-
Your five-minute limit is-
-the credibility of this Board of Education is in the hopper, so to speak. Thank you.
Scott La Libonte, I'm sorry if I said that wrong. Can you please correct me when you come up?
This is La Liberty.
La Liberty? Sorry, Scott.
That's okay. It's a difficult one. Scott La Liberty. So I had two things. One, I just wanted to follow up because two meetings ago, I had asked the Board, brought up a point about Grapefruit Health and who had done the due diligence on it. I've had a lot of people come up to me and thank me for bringing that up, but I wanted to thank Mr. Bolendorf for doing his due diligence and following up on that, and we found that Grapefruit Health did have a SOC 2, which is an independent assessment by a CPA firm that looked at their security controls. So I appreciate you following up on that. I want to let everybody know that. Secondly, I just wanted to, as a resident, make a comment. You know, I know, I'm happy to hear that you're engaging with the New Jersey School Boards to look at options for the superintendent search. On the other meeting, I know there was some debate about the cost and concern about the cost. As a resident, I just want to tell you all, you know, live by the motion of, don't be penny wise and pound foolish. We're picking a person to run this district, the budget of which I think is about $170 million. Right? You're picking the CEO essentially of a large company, a large corporation. And if we don't get the right person, $10,000, $50,000 spent on the search is going to be a drop in the bucket to the damage that can be done to our community, to our kids, and to all the administration. So I hope you consider that. I hope we get a good search, and I appreciate your efforts in it. Thank you.
Thank you. I don't think we have any other, no other?
Good evening. Dana Ronzaro, 31 Sider Press Lane. I'm here tonight to ask about four questions. One, the first involves Orchard Valley Middle School. On March 24th, Mr. Bolendorf sent out a letter that the principal of that school was transferred to a different position. Right? Unfortunately, that position didn't exist until tonight because tonight was the first time that this board voted on a job description. So my question is, how can a person be transferred into a position that, number one, doesn't have a job position, a job title or a description, and two, that wasn't made public for either internal or external candidates? While she may very well be qualified to be an assistant director of the preschool program, I don't know her, and I don't know who else might be out there. So I asked that this board, number one, explain how she was transferred there, and two, what steps are being taken to ensure that the right person is in that position? The second question I have is, Mr. Bolendorf, thank you for explaining the sex ed curriculum and how it's going to be implemented. I'd like a timeframe. I know that it has to go into effect in September. I know that it was adopted in 2020, but because of COVID, it went by the wayside. So I'd like a firm date as to when you're going to request public participation, when the proposal for a curriculum is going to be out there. Because if our kids are going to be experiencing it come September, there's not a whole lot of time between now and September to make sure that the curriculum is in place and that everyone in the public understands what's in the curriculum and what options they may have to opt out. For example, is it going to be taught solely by a health teacher or in elementary school by nurses and/or the gym teacher? I would think so, but things in this district seem to be taught in different subjects that cause some pause. For example, wit and wisdom is an ELA curriculum, but that's where the Holocaust is taught in fifth grade and not in social studies, where it should be. So I'm also asking what part and who will be teaching those subjects so that parents know what their options are. Next, Ms. Baker, thank you for bringing up the ad hoc committee. My concern with that is, under that policy, you are limited to no more than four board members to be on the committee. My understanding is there's an open seat, and at prior meetings, there was a discussion that whoever fills that seat would be part of that committee. Unfortunately, by the board voting to have the ad hoc committee, that's now not an option. So what would be the plan to include a future board member, once the person is picked, to be part of that process? Last question, superintendent search. Near and dear to I think everyone's heart and everyone, on everyone's mind. At the last meeting, there was a discussion that you would look at various agencies to determine who would do the superintendent search from the outside. School Board was just one of, I believe, three different search companies that was used. Somehow, and I wasn't at this meeting, and the video was kind of funky to watch online, somehow that discussing which committee was going to be used went into that we're only using School Board. So I would like this board to consider having multiple people come out. Let's find out what the prices are, because I think everyone will agree. You can't be, you know, you have to make sure that we're doing the right thing. Find out their timeline as well. If one person can't do it for three to four months, and another entity who has experience doing it can do it in two months, we should be looking into that as a board. So just because we've used them in the past doesn't mean we should be using them presently. Absolutely get them into talk and find out what their proposal is. But again, I heard at the last meeting that there was going to be multiple people reached out to, and it appears that only one entity was reached out. So I'd like to know if any other entities were reached out to, and if you, as a board, are going to be bringing in additional potential search companies to say. Those are my questions.
Thank you, Dana. The first two questions, I think, are mine. So with regards to the position, the assistant director position has existed for some time in the WTPA contract. That lane is there. We've had an assistant director in the past, so the position did exist. We just need a specificity to the job description. So we knew we were going to be creating that position, but we needed to move on the transfer at that point in time, knowing that the position was going to be created, and we waited on the job description approval tonight to ensure, which we knew were coming anyway, that the funds were coming for the preschool expansion grant. So that's why things seem to be a little convoluted, but that's the reality of it. There is a vacancy, and in terms of internal, people have the opportunity now to apply for the principalship at Orchard Valley Middle School. So maintaining that ability for folks to apply for a vacancy still exists, although that does not currently exist in terms of having to do that as it relates to the contract with the WTEA. However, that vacancy is there, and that vacancy is advertised, and folks have the possibility either externally or internally to apply for the job. The second question was regards to, I'm losing it now. You asked a lot of questions.
Sex ed curriculum.
Oh, I don't have a timeline for you, but a timeline will come out as it relates to that. The board has to approve the final budget so that the dollars that are in there for the curriculum rewrite are approved. We anticipate that will happen. That'll happen on April 28th, and then after that, we'll be able to push out a timeline as to when we need to do things. I agree with you. It's something that has to happen quickly. But the teachers available to write the curriculum won't happen until the summer. So that'll be the earlier part of the summer so that we do have time in the back end to review and push that other information out that you talked about to folks. I think the rest of the questions were relative to the board.
There is a point of clarification. I know we can't go back and forth. My question as to ability to apply to the position wasn't only the OVMs position, it was also the preschool assistant director position. Is that publicly available to apply to?
No, it is not.
Okay. And I had questions on school board?
Yeah, I'll take a stab at that. Connie, obviously jump in.
Ryan, before you do that, I wanted to address about the new member. She asked about the new member about the committee.
Got it.
I do not believe that the deadline for applications has ended yet. I think it's close when it's the-
Twenty-second.
Twenty-second. Twenty-second, we'll have all the applications. We plan to interview the candidates, all the candidates, here in public, and then we will make our decision. We will be asking questions in public. Everyone will have an opportunity to listen to the responses of the candidates. Once we select a candidate for the vacancy, that person will automatically be included in everything involving the superintendent. We already have a committee of four that was established this evening to lead the search for the board. No other board member can be placed on that committee because it would be a quorum. So the new board member will take, I don't know if it'll be the evening that they're interviewed. They may want to have someone read them the oath and, you know, take pictures, have family here and so forth and so on. So I don't know if we'll actually vote to select that candidate that evening or we'll wait for the next board meeting, but most certainly, due to the fact that the superintendent search is probably going to go on for months and months, that new person will be an active member of the board in terms of participating with the selection of the new superintendent. Brian, you want to take the other part?
Go ahead.
Yeah, I was just going to say, it's a point well taken. I think Brian and I actually talked about it and didn't come out. It's very possible, for instance, we could consider three people and keep him one seat open, or probably that process won't be concluded. You're going to be away the whole month of May. Elaine?
Just like Ray, I'll be available on the phone.
You know, it is possible. We have work to do right now. We don't have a person on. I just want to throw this out for the ad hoc committee to think about. Can we start out with four? When Elaine leaves for the month, that will be open. We will then have a new board member, and we could talk then. I don't know. I'm trying to look at that in a very open way.
I have no problem unless any other board member would like to speak on this. I have no problem with Elaine calling in, participating. I don't see the need to wait for a new board member. We already voted on a committee and accepted. We established the committee this evening. We've already selected the board members for that committee, and I believe the four board members chosen is an excellent committee to move forward. So the new board member will take some time to get up a speed for all other items, including the superintendent search. And it's going to be a little while before, you know, they're going to feel comfortable with serving on a committee, especially a committee as important as the superintendent search committee, Connie. So at this point, I think I'd like to stay with the committee that we have. We have a leader of the committee, and I think the four members will definitely all contribute greatly towards this superintendent search.
We have two leaders. We have co-chairs, just for clarification. The other thing I did want to mention, I see the New Jersey School Board as a professional consultant. So I think when they come in, for me, it's going to be a lot of fact-finding and information gathering to try to use them. This is the first time I've done something like this, and I want to gain as much information and knowledge as possible. I think one of the first action items for the committee would be to kind of explore some of those external consulting groups. So I think for the next two weeks, that's kind of what we'll do. But we'll talk about that offline, but I hear you.
Thank you.
And you know, Dana, real quick-
The other thing is, I'm sorry, Stacy. I don't think this board has established any timeline for the completion of this. It'll be finished when we feel we have exercised everything possible to select the best candidate for the children of this district, students of this district. So we're not rushing anything through, however long it takes, okay? We're going to find the best candidate for the job. I'm sorry, Stacy.
Regarding the PE health curriculum with it coming up in August, I think it would be a good idea, I talked to Dr. Gregor Quick today, that before that comes, we can do maybe like a, we as in Dr. Gregor and Gretchen, could do like a presentation or something that outlines. Everything is online, and it is transparent, but it is a lot of information to go through. So I think it would be good if we had some type of presentation that outlined, that might kind of get ahead of any questions or concerns of what is actually in it, which may not be in it. So that could be something that we can discuss.
Stacy, if I could add to that, too. One of the things that we learned today, in fact, we have a call-in to the state. On the website right now, they have listed the second and the fifth grade standards and the eighth grade standards, or, yeah. But if you click on just second grade standards, all the standards, grades K through 12 are listed. So I'm afraid, and even the heading of the page is still say through second grade.
Right.
And they're not. So if you look at the standards, just a little tip, each of the performance expectations have a code, a three-digit code. The third number is significant and aligned with the grade level for that standard. So as an example here, the one that I'm looking at that Mr. Scheidel talked about, at the top of the page, it says 2020 NJ SLS CHPE by the end of grade two. But all the performance standards listed on that page are grade five. So I think that there's a lot of confusion because these standards are not being put out properly by the Department of Education, and we have a call-in to them to clean that up because that is problematic. It would, people don't understand what these numbers mean. So they read this, and they think all these things are for second grade, and they're not. So it's important.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Joseph DeBruno?
Hello, everyone. My first meeting. I just made a couple notes to talk, so I keep to place where I want to talk about. My son goes to Whitman Elementary School, and my wife and I have been very happy with his education up to this point. He has excellent teachers. The principal's a good guy who cares about his students, and all the staff we have met have been excellent. I am not here about Ms. Julie Gesempel's, whatever the events were, I am not familiar with them, so I wish you well. I'd like to make the following factual, scientific statements as a precursor to what I want to discuss. We are all human beings. Human beings have 46 chromosomes organized into 23 pairs. Many are familiar with this number from the name of the company, 23andMe, who do genetic scanning for people interested in that background. The 23rd pair always, except for rare genetic mutations, contains at least one, possibly two X chromosomes, no more than one Y chromosome. The two possible combinations are XX and XY, which produce a state of being female or male respectively. This goes back as far as the study of genetics pioneered by Gregor Mendel, with subsequent discoveries in the field pertaining to specific roles of chromosomal data. The United States federal law recognizes the age of majority to be no later than 18 years old. For the purpose of defining terms for which we are all familiar with and have been used for thousands of years, if the 23rd pair of chromosomes is XY and the individual is over 18, he is considered a man. If the individual listed above is instead less than 18, he's considered a boy. If the 23rd pair of chromosomes is XX, and the individual is over 18, she is considered a woman. If the individual is instead less than 18, she is a girl. An individual's unique genetic information, whether coarsely viewed in chromosomes or more finely examined in a DNA sequence, does not change during one's lifetime. Of course, individuals may be more or less mature physically, emotionally, or mentally at any age, and most importantly, in the free society we live in, they can choose to express themselves in any of a multitude of different ways as they go forward with their journey in life. To the point of my attendance here tonight, what I am here about tonight is an element of a new curriculum for September, and this was a name not mentioned earlier, of pink, blue, and purple. I have seen what has been purported to be the teaching materials for this curriculum online. They assert, as the title suggests, a gender fluidity, which is not an element of science and does not align with the facts I cited above. Statements about how one could have certain anatomy but may be the opposite gender- Statements about how one could have certain anatomy that may be the opposite gender due to one's state of mind are emphasized in that material that I have seen. The calling out of a channel on YouTube, which was also a link, and another gentleman mentioned before, called Amaze, referring to an elementary school student saying how normal it is to watch, and I just want to say, inappropriate material. I won't explicitly state the details here. Recent publicity has already made many aware. And in any case, you could check out the articles citing pink, blue, and purple curriculum just easily as I did. You may be familiar already with the teaching materials themselves, but I would have no way of knowing that. But coming to my main point, if the materials are alleging a position, a philosophy, a set of ideas, which is not supported by science as one would encounter in public school like biology or Mendel's theory of genetics, et cetera, then I have the right as a parent to opt my child out of that curriculum. Just as schools do not have the right to teach elements of religion in a dogmatic way, they cannot force a philosophy which is arbitrary onto the student expecting him or her to power it back in compliance. I would like to know where to get the form, if it exists, to opt out of this curriculum on my son's behalf. I could certainly have an attorney draw up the appropriate papers, but I have a feeling that you may get many similar letters. So, they may as well be standardized in a form. I'll close with this. The role of school, as we all know, is to teach important subjects to our children such as math, science, reading, and history, for example. History in this case is especially applicable. In 1941, Admiral Yamamoto had a famous quote attributed to him after the Imperial Japanese Navy attacked Pearl Harbor, using his plan, and apparently he had second thoughts. "I fear all we have done is to awaken a sleeping giant and fill him with a terrible resolve." In the elections to follow, I believe many will arrive at a similar sentiment. Now, I said my question about the form. I also have a further question because I heard that the Amaze site was blocked from the website. That's great. If it's on an independent URL, distribute it to home. And I know my time is up. Just let me finish the sentence if I can.
Can you come to a close?
I am right now. I am right now. If the URL is sent home, that's not blocked. So, I want to know if any references to Amaze will be in any of the material. And like I said a couple of times, what form, what do I have to do to opt out of that curriculum?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. DeBruno. I kind of felt like my answer to Mr. Scheidel, I think, provided most of the answers to the questions you had prepared. But I appreciate you getting up and expressing them. Again, no curriculum has been developed as it relates to these standards. All that any of us have to go on at this particular point in time is the standards. That curriculum is yet to be developed. And we are going to involve the community of parents involved in that process. We believe that that's the right thing to do. In terms of opting out, people have been opting out of sex education in our schools for eons. It's nothing new. This is obviously. Whichever you decide. You have that right to do that. And whether there's a form letter or not, you do it at the building level in a simple letter to the building principal that you want your child opted out of. That is all you really need to do. It's not a big problem. And like I said, it's something that happens and something that we, you know, are used to doing. I don't see any scenario that if Amaze is not part of our curriculum, which I don't believe that it will be, that a URL would be being sent home by teachers. We've often talked in here before about, you know, what are the systems of checks and balances? If you have a curriculum in place and specific individuals decide to go off the beaten path and start teaching what they want to teach in the classroom outside of the curriculum, that's a problem. And that's something that needs to be addressed and something that the administration will address and in some cases has addressed. So, that's nothing new. So, the assurance that I have for you is the administration in this board would not support any teacher doing something that was not aligned with the curriculum that's approved by the community through the Board of Education.
I'm sorry, but if you want to stay after?
You can ask me afterwards, Mr. DeBruno.
You can ask. You really have to stay a little bit. We're almost, we're almost.
No documentation of anything that we're not using is going to be put out to anybody. You're welcome.
Tom Baldacero?
Thank you. Tom Baldacero, 22 Hilliard Way. First of all, thank you. What you just said a little while ago was one of the best things that I heard, that we're not going to let time dictate the superintendent's search. Time and money are not what's important. It's getting the right person. One of the first things I think these days we teach kids is to be careful with technology. What you put out there could be out there forever. So, you are what you put in writing, whether it's a personal email or a professional email. And I read those emails. And as Ron said, there is nothing that brought forth the things you put in there. There was a lot of politics, a lot of personal agenda, none of which belongs on a board. And we do need to get rid of that element. No more politics, no more personal agendas. Now, I came here hoping to move forward and hear a lot of progress, and honestly, I didn't get enough. Connie put out something about vote of no confidence. And I don't really care what you answer, but answer. You're our voice, and to abstain is wrong, okay? We need to know where you stand. If you don't understand, there is a complete lack of trust in the board right now. You know, you guys volunteered for this or sign up for it. I know you want to get away from it, Dr. Ellis, but you're there. You can. And avoiding it, abstaining it, it's not going to move forward without transparency, okay? I don't trust some members on this board. I want to. I want to hear what you're going to say, what you're going to do. But what's happened is wrong, okay? And you've all been quiet about it. Couple people spoke up, and I appreciate that. But we need more because we're not going to move forward, okay? You know, Mr. Novy, I don't know you, but I do know in the writing, Julie picked you, okay? So, you are her by extension, okay? And that worries me because I don't want politics, okay? And if, you know, we talk a lot about in the emails, there was a lot of credit taken for the board and who we hired, what color they were, okay? Diversity is important. I get it. But diversity of political affiliation is important. We need different voices. We can't have everybody the same. You will never innovate. You will never have constructive discussion. If everybody's the same, we won't move forward. Democrats and Republicans think differently. They do. I don't want politics in our schools, but I want different voices, and I don't want everybody to be the same. And that's what it seemed like we were trying to create here. So, I'm counting on all of you to stop it, to change it, to take politics out, to take personal agendas out, and worry about education. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ray, I'll speak to that because I, you know, I did give a lot of thought to how I was going to answer a vote of no confidence. And when we had our last meeting, the biggest push that I thought made the most sense was to have Mr. Bentley look into utilizing the Ethics Committee. I'd seen the video of the board in South Brunswick and how they used it. And honestly, having a separate party to do that for the board seems like the most sense. I absolutely 100% think that was wrong. It was, it doesn't reflect on who we are. It doesn't show transparency. We need as a group to push forward and use what we're now seeing happening as a learning experience of what not to do. And Julie stepping down as president was a huge step in the right direction. I feel that that answers the question for me. Yes, it was wrong. Yes, it is not what we want to focus on. We want the Ethics Committee to focus on that so that we can be moving forward because even moving forward incrementally is better than what's going on right now. So, that's why I vote to abstain because I feel like it's better handled outside of this board so that we can focus on school policy and focus on the kids. And when Julie did mention me in that email, she asked me, you know, would I look into the idea of running for board? Because I came and spoke at a couple of meetings, and I was passionate. And I'll always be passionate about our students. You know, I have two that are very different in their own ways. And to me, being able to represent them and being able to care for them and being able to look at what all students need, from where I come from as an educator, from the curriculum standpoint, from all those areas, that's really, really important to me. And I want to continue that. So, you know, I feel like that's the most important thing, and I just wanted to make sure that I said that.
Thank you.
I just want to make a comment. I did abstain. I did make my comments known with my feelings. And Brian reminded me why I ran for the board. My reasons for running for the board are for the kids, and I will remain true to doing the best for the kids, to help the teachers, do the best job with the kids. And so, because I already put my statement out there, that's why I abstained. I think you all know how I felt.
As did I.
You brought up the fact about transparency. I think in the last several meetings, we've been very transparent. And I think we will be moving forward very transparent. Only time will tell whether or not we'll live up to that standard. But I think every board member here is definitely moving towards living up to that standard, being transparent, doing everything we can in public that is legally, that can legally be done in public. There are certain things we cannot bring up in public. But I think you need to kind of just cool down a little bit. Give us a chance to move forward. Give us a chance to do what we were elected to do. And also, give us a chance to bring the proper person on board that will move this district forward. Excuse me. Continue to move this district forward. So, you know, I guess I'm asking if you would please give us a little time to show you that everything you've brought up to us and everything that has been said has been thought about by this board. I don't like going home after a board meeting where we are facing ridicule, we're having things said about us that just simply are not true. So, I'm asking, give us some time. The next meeting's going to be very important. The next meeting will start our search, really. The new committee will start our search. And again, I'll emphasize it, there's no timeline on that search. We will bring the best candidate forward when this board has agreed to bring it forward for the betterment of this school district. So, please, give us a chance. We can't erase what happened in the past, but we certainly can prove ourselves as we move into the future. Barbara, I can't read the middle name. Anderson? Okay, Barbara, thank you. I'm sorry about that.
No, no, that's fine. That's fine. It's not easy. I live in Whitman Square. Thank you, Connie, for stirring the pot. We really need to get that all out in the open. You've been transparent, and you've helped us along too. A few weeks ago, I attended a town hall about bullying. This is a deep-seated problem that started a very long time ago due to media of all types. The agenda put forth was to erase bait, diminish anyone and everyone, no matter their race, color, and religion. This is not new. It's called "The Wrap-Up Smear" by Nancy Pelosi. All the boards throughout the country, because of your involvement with the globalists that run a network that destroys the minds and families declared war on the minds of the children. It's been going on for 70-plus years. It was always about the children, but who knew what was really going on? We were doing our thing somewhat happy. Then you saw the noose get tighter around your neck every decade. Yet by following a mandate that is not a law for masking, forced vaccinations, quarantining, sitting them outside for a class six feet apart, that's bullying. When they didn't wear the mask properly, telling them to wear those bacteria-filled masks for eight hours, sending them home if they had symptoms of a virus or flu or cold, along with contact tracing, which is what this was, I call it bullying. I also call it grooming, which was about to get worse with your curriculum. You were surprised to hear about a woman when she brought up some information a few meetings ago that her daughter or son, I forget which, brought home and asked the question, "Am I normal?" That was in the paperwork. And then there was more to it than that. So, some of you acted very surprised. Some teachers went too far by hurting or pushing a child, by constantly ridiculing them in public. I call that bullying. Then you wonder why they acted out their frustration, anger, and carrying on like animals that live in the wild. So, you're also okay with children walking around with leashes and acting like cats and dogs in the schools? That's another form of bullying. Children who are weak while the bullies do as they please. It's disgusting to me that any adult would allow this to continue. How dare you think it's normal? How dare you think pedophilia is normal? Because this is what this curriculum is all about, pedophilia. How dare you continue to serve on these boards that push these agendas and all for the money? You followed this program to get the Esther money and didn't care about the children. You, Julie, mentioned in your outrage a few weeks ago that we didn't care about the children, that we were biased, and the media we listened to is not truth. We've been here, I've been here for over a year, talking to all of you and got nowhere because none of you budge. None of you. You also mentioned during an evaluation a few months back that the only problem you had, Julie, was with the parents. For the last almost two years, we've been speaking out. We are your problem because we're here now. In your email, you also mentioned picking and choosing who you want as a superintendent. I think you really need to step down. As president, it's not enough. You need to leave the Board of Education. Fact after fact was given to all of you on the board by many parents about the masks, jabs, teaching methods, and the statistics about these experiments, gene therapy, which is not a vax. You completely ignored it, all for the Esther money that had tons of strings attached to it. It just continued to roll off your backs. Now, you had to hire people because the children are having mental and emotional problems. You're a part of the crime against humanity. This is child abuse, all part of the United Nations Agenda 2030 that your governor is very much a part of. The Department of Education, United Nations, unions, put all this wicked curriculum into law that we teach children as young as five or even younger sex education that is pornography. Why would anyone in their right mind do such a thing to an innocent child? I will tell you, they are probably, I won't even go there in that one. You are grooming for pedophilia and how to be one. So, you're teaching them pedophilia and how to be one for themselves, not to excel in life, but to be a slave to the beast system. I've got more to say, but I won't go into the Hunter Biden laptops or Epstein or Ghislaine Maxwell. That's a whole different topic. The harm inflicted on the children that we're part of and is horrific and all because of a mandate by a governor who is part of the globalists that are controlling a beast system is disgusting. In your heart of hearts, how does this make you feel about the children versus money? I think we need to vet our teachers more thoroughly than what we do, find that what they want, what they're doing to our children, what's going on in their minds? They're coming out of schools that are not teaching properly. Thank you.
Mary Ben?
Hi, good evening. Mary Ben from Wedgwood, I don't know if you know where, but Julie, you weren't here last week, and I'm sure you watched. But I just want to reiterate, I feel the utter lack of respect for the actual board you're sitting on and singling out a school board member and to the residents who voted you in, not to mention the red hats, to which I don't call myself a red hat. And I think there are numerous other disrespects that you've shown. It is time for you to step down. I know for a fact that Danielle Halpern, she was a great person on the school board. She was a great asset. We now have a position to fill because she said it's either you or me? Yes, she did. That is what happened. So, we can say what we want to say, but at the end of the day, you just stepping down from president isn't really enough. I feel there's been enough times when you've shown outrage, when you've been on the dais and smacked the gavel because somebody's up here saying what you didn't want. I've watched you. People don't come to the meetings that often anymore because you're not very, when somebody comes up here that you like, you're okay with, you talk about how wonderful they were. Thank you for sharing that. But if it's someone else, you don't do that. It's kind of, well, thank you. And you just kind of give your little smirk, just like you were doing when people were coming up here and speaking. So, it does, it's not going unnoticed. I did give, in addition, when you put something in your personal email, you are a voted member of a board. You are an elected official. So, your private email is just, is as open as anything else, as long as you're talking about the school board. So, for you to come out and say, well, that shouldn't have been said, it was. You were talking about school boards. You're talking about filling seats. You're talking about a superintendent. You were talking about the school board, no matter which way you cut it or slice it. Last week, I gave a code of ethics to the board and also what's expected here. I'll give this to you before I step down. So, I guess in closing, I just. this board who did vote, abstained from the vote of no confidence, it did show a lack of confidence for me in the board moving forward because here's Julie, she's going to sit on this board and she's going to make the next decision along with all of you on the next person who's going to be chosen as a school board member? That's a little scary. So she's taken off of, you know, taken herself off. Nobody asked her to be off of the superintendent search. It was only the email that came out that made her step down. And now she's going to choose who's going to be on the school board with her and serving? I mean, she's already written down how she's choosing people. So it's a little, I don't, I'm not speaking for everyone else, I'm speaking for myself, but I think we've seen enough, and maybe it's just time you step down. I'll give you the code of ethics.
We've all had ethics training every year as board members, and also I really look forward to the ethics investigation because several attorneys have, several attorneys have looked at the email and told me that that would just probably be dismissed because there was nothing in there unethical, but thank you for your comments.
Rich Bennett.
As a resident first, councilman second. I appreciate everything that the board members do. I know how tough it is to be elected to something and to work tirelessly. It really is, and I appreciate everything that you do. I really do, and it makes a difference to this town. When I saw the video of Julie yelling, I thought it was so unprofessional. It was just very unprofessional, and it's not acceptable. It's just not acceptable to talk down to people. That should have been like a timeout. We can talk about this off the thing. That's what I learned. It should have been a timeout. But talking about red caps and blue caps? Well, I'm sorry to say, I'm a red cap, and to say that I don't care about the kids in this town, which you said in that video, it's not true, or in the email, it's not true. I care much about that. I have two kids, my daughter will be graduating this year, that went through the school system, and it's the greatest school system around, by far. It does a great job educating my kids, and it makes a difference today in what I see in my kids. Thank you.
Thank you. Jenny Murphy.
Jenny Murphy, 53, Goodwin Parkway. Just want to have a chat with you guys a little bit about what I heard tonight and just offer some encouragement that when you talk to NJ SBA, that you bring them in here and you ask them to hold a retreat for you guys on board governance. I think a couple speakers tonight spoke of very important things about the issue of hiring school boards as the hiring agent for the board for the superintendent. I thought the same thing. I never heard you guys agree to that at the last meeting. There was no action taken to do that. So, and I think that there's confusion up there on what is discussed and what you as a governing body agree to do. So just, I think you are all looking, you talked to me after the meeting, some of you guys, take advantage of paying for school boards because this is a hard job. Some of the stuff you stumble onto one time and you don't even know that you might be doing something wrong. Right? So the other thing I want to talk about is abstaining. School boards will tell you, you either vote yes, no, or abstain. The abstention is used if you don't have enough information, you're legally conflicted or personally conflicted, but to abstain because you don't want to say yes or no, that's not a proper vote. And so I'm just saying that they can come in and teach you about that. And I did want to get, my question is what research was done on that resolution? I saw the video posted. You brought, Kathy, I think you brought it up tonight. There was talk about it, but it wasn't that complicated. So did you get a report back from the solicitor, and is the board going to move in that direction? Because my understanding, even just watching it, was there's no guarantee that the School Ethics Commission will take up that case in South Brunswick, but the board passed a resolution to submit it to the Ethics Commission, and the first phase of that is that you have to show probable cause. So it doesn't mean that they're definitely going to do this for you, but it was kind of an action on the board's part to say, like I've heard some of you say, "I really don't know what to do with this. I don't think it was right, but here, you guys, we're going to self-report, kind of like college and high school athletics. We're going to self-report, this happened. What do we do with it?" So I'm asking you, I think that there's enough information out there on this right now. Anybody can pass a resolution if you want to do it. Thank you.
Thank you.
I did have a chance to do, to look into as best I could the actions of the South Plainfield Board. We were unable to get, South, what did I say? South Brunswick Board. We were unable to get the actual resolution that was passed by that board because it is, the minutes of that particular meeting have not been published yet, so if you make an open request, it's not available. I did have a chance to talk to the attorney for that particular board and got some information from her about what the board did, which was public knowledge or things that we talked about, which I'm not prepared to discuss in public because there were, she spoke to me with professional courtesies. I will share those with the board in executive session if need be. But the essence of that, there was no motion or resolution by the board to have the School Ethics Commission do an investigation, to come in and do an internal audit, so to speak, of what happened. My understanding is that the board voted to give the authority to an individual board member, I don't know who that is, to file an ethics complaint against the board member. And to have the attorney for the board assist in that filing of that ethics complaint. Whether that ethics complaint has been filed yet or not, I don't know. It just, it was an authority to have someone on that board do it and to have the board solicitor be a part of that. Now, I'm not really sure whether that is a proper resolution because as we said before, the board can't file an ethics complaint against an individual board member. Any one of you, any one of you can file ethics complaint against anyone up here. You don't need to have a board resolution to do that. And I also question whether or not it's a valid use of public funds to authorize a board attorney to pursue an ethics charge against one of its members. And if the board asked me to do that, I would not do that because again, I think it's, I'm just very concerned about that, whether it's Julie, whether it's anyone else on this board, to have the board, in essence, have the board attorney's office subsidize the pursuit of an ethics complaint against an individual board member. I have some problems with that. But that's my understanding of what happened up in, up in that particular district. I can talk more about it in executive session with the board, with some other ideas, but that's what I know right now, and that's what the attorney was able to share with me because that was all public knowledge.
I'll just say something. Mr. Bentley, there's the tape of the board meeting, and the person, I guess that was filling in for the president, read the resolution. The resolution, he read it. I guess somebody could actually transcribe it, you know? I called...
I know what's in, I know what's in the resolution because it's been explained to me. I didn't see the video. I just know that it's not an investigation by the School Ethics Commission. It's the authority, it was the authority of the board to give a board member the ability to pursue an ethics complaint against that board president and to have the attorney for the board assist in that pursuit of that ethics complaint.
I didn't hear, I didn't hear that, but you're the attorney. I guess you're right. I don't know.
Since we haven't received the minutes from that particular meeting, I think that we're going to ask Mr. Bentley to continue researching, once you get the minutes, and report back whether or not you have additional information or the information that you received through the minutes and even maybe in other correspondence with their legal counsel, there is any change to what you were able to report this evening. I don't know when those minutes will be published, but hopefully maybe they'll be published prior to our next meeting, and if there's an addition to what was stated this evening, you can bring that up at the next meeting. We have no more yellow cards. So can I entertain? Do we have the room? Okay. Like to have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
No, close to the public.
Oh, close to the public. Motion to close?
Submissed.
All in favor?
Aye.
A motion to adjourn?
Submissed.
All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting's adjourned.